Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the last council meeting of 2020. This meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council's meeting notice dated December 10, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naido?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. And now I'd like to ask anyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice for all.
Moving on, Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also streaming live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated December 10, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specific times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature, and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to approval of the minutes. We have a lot of minutes tonight. Do I hear a motion to approve minutes of regular and closed-session meetings of November 16th and December 1, 2020, as well as the closed-session appointments, meeting of November 30th, and the Capitol Budget Workshop meeting of December 9?
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now moving on to reports. Madam Mayor, would you like to start off, please?
Yes, please. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and good evening to everyone who's watching from home. To help everyone enjoy Summit even more during the holidays, now through Saturday, December 26, there are no fees required for on-street parking at 90-minute on-street spaces at the Bank Street Lot and the First Level of the Tier Garage. Time limits are being strictly enforced, so you can park free for 90 minutes, but you cannot linger because we still need turnover for other folks to come and park and shop. Fees are still required in the DeForest Park and Shop lots where the first hour is free as always, and also at the YMCA library parking lot. Thank you to Summit Downtown, Inc., for the festive holiday entertainments throughout the downtown. December 19 is the last day to take a free horse-and-carriage ride. The boarding location is Lyric Park at the corner of Beechwood Road and Bank Street. As you continue your holiday shopping, please consider shopping locally and supporting our wonderful local Summit businesses. The City of Summit has installed a special drop-off mailbox for letters to Santa Claus located in Summit's Promenade Park next to Mondo at 426 Springfield Avenue. Children are encouraged to write letters to Santa and drop them off in the Santa mailbox before December 24. Please note, there will be no direct-mail response to letters deposited in this mailbox. For a written response from Santa, please visit www.northpole.com. And in the spirit of giving, the Summit First Aid Squad continues its annual appeal. If you are able to support this vital organization and the essential services it provides to our community, please go to summitems.org to make an online donation. And lastly, I learned today that an anonymous donor in Summit has offered to match every donation made to Grace Pantry through the end of 1995/2020. So just please go to summitcommunityprograms.com, and then you can search for the donation space for Grace, and that's a matching donation from an anonymous donor for all donations made through the end of this year. That's all I have for you all, and to everyone out there, happy holidays, and let's be safe in the storm. I know we've got a lot of storm preparation that we've been working on throughout the day, but do. Happy holidays and enjoy your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So hopefully by now everyone is aware that there is a winter storm, which I believe has a name now, Gale, is predicted for the Summit area tomorrow, December 16, through, I think, the morning on Thursday, with up to 18 inches of snow possible. Please review the snow guidelines that you can find on the Department of Community Services at cityofsummit.org, and please stay safe during the storm. Recycling pickup, and this is all sort of storm-related information I'm going to provide for the next several statements. Recycling pickup is canceled for Thursday, December 17, and has been rescheduled for Friday, December 18. Please do not place items curbside on Wednesday and wait until plows have cleared roadways before placing items on the curb on Thursday evening for Friday morning pickup. Thursday household garbage pickup is rescheduled for Saturday, December 19. Please clear a path in the snow for crews to safely access trash cans. The DTS construction zoning permit counter will be closing at noon tomorrow, December 16, in anticipation of hazardous travel conditions associated with the storm, and will remain closed on Thursday, December 17. The DCS counter will reopen on Friday, December 18 for essential business only. For more information on these essential business services, please visit the city website. And then further, the municipal transfer station will be closed on Thursday, December 17. Now for some non-storm-related information, curbside Christmas tree pickup begins Saturday, December 26, and goes through Friday, January 29. Trees must be stripped of all ornaments, lights, decorations, and removed from any plastic bags. And then lastly, all city offices and the transfer station are closed Friday, December 25, Thursday, December 31, and January 1. The recycling and trash schedule is unchanged over the Christmas and New Year holidays. That's all I have for this evening. I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and hope everyone has a healthy and less anxious 2021. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And now for the Council President's comments. The last day for the Summit Farmer's Market is this Sunday, December 20. The market will be open from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Opening the market this season during a pandemic presented challenges that were met with creativity and intelligent planning. Thank you to Summit Downtown, Inc., for its effective management, and to the vendors and customers who followed the safety protocols. We had a successful season, and we look forward to next year. Due to the impending winter storm, the Free Holder Board is canceling the COVID-19 mobile testing event scheduled for December 17 in Berkeley Heights. Residents looking to get tested can visit the Union County Drive-Thru Testing Center at Kane University. To make an appointment, go to ucnj.org. Impending winter storm Gale is forecast to bring snow, ice, and wind gusts up to 55 miles per hour with a potential for power outages from downed power lines. Citizens are asked to call 911 for emergencies only. Do not call 911 to report outages or to request information about power outage restoration. In the event of power outages or downed power lines, call JCP&L at 888-544-4877 immediately, or you can report online at firstenergycorp.comoutages. Please stay away from all downed power lines and assume that they are live and dangerous. Thank you, and stay safe. In addition, individuals who are in need of shelter during or before the storm can call the Union County Division of Social Services. The number there is 908-965-2700, and transportation will be arranged as needed. And finally, another reminder from the CDC about in-person holiday gatherings. The safest way to celebrate the winter holidays is with the people you lived with only. Together with others, the best way is to plan a virtual celebration. If you choose to plan an in-person gathering, choose outdoors or well-ventilated spaces. Wear a mask that covers both your mouth and nose. Stay at least six feet apart from people you do not live with, and wash your hands often, or use a hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. For more information on safe holiday planning, go to cdc.gov. And for more information on state of New Jersey indoor and outdoor gathering restrictions, go to covid19 nj.gov. And I wish everyone a very, very happy and healthy holiday season, and please, please follow the COVID guidelines. We're getting closer and closer, the light is at the end of the tunnel, but we still all need to follow these rules to keep everyone safe and healthy. So with that, we'll move on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, members of the public have an opportunity to comment on any agenda, any matter that is not on the agenda. And it looks like we have a lot of attendees tonight, so I am going to ask people to keep their comments to three minutes. State your name and address at the beginning. If you have a written comment, please provide it to the clerk at our licitase@cityofsummit.org. And you can use the raise hand feature to be recognized. So our first looks like Marcus Gokan. Go ahead, Marcus.
Thank you, Council President and Mayor Radus, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Marcus Gokan, spelled G-O-K-A-N, and I live at 88 Hobart Avenue in Summit. I'm a 17-year-old senior at the Union County Magnet High School, and I'm also a youth representative of the Summit Recycling Advisory Committee. I'd like to use my time today to talk about the future of our planet and the importance of being sustainably minded in Summit. We generate too much single-use plastic to recycle our way out of this problem. If we don't start taking more dramatic steps to eliminate single-use plastic, in just five years, we will have one pound of plastic in our oceans for every three pounds of fish. By 2050, that number will have risen to a worrying one pound of plastic for every pound of fish. That plastic harms aquatic wildlife and eventually makes its way into our bodies. This is completely unacceptable, as nearly half the world's population counts on fish as their main source of protein. Reducing our plastic use, and ultimately eliminating it from our lives, is fundamental in the fight against climate change. I'm looking forward to the new year when Summit's progressive ordinance to ban plastic bags, polystyrene, and straws goes into effect. And I'm also thankful that Governor Murphy has signed the toughest plastic bag ban in the nation due to go into effect in May of 2022. These are two fantastic starts towards a sustainable future, but there is still much work to be done. As responsible citizens of Summit, there are immediate steps that we can take moving forward. When ordering takeout for dinner, refuse plastic cutlery if you plan on bringing your food home. Instead, use the silverware that you doubtless have, as plastic silverware is not recyclable. Additionally, consider using reusable plastic bottles, using washable masks, and refraining from using plastic straws if you don't need to. Finally, please only recycle plastics 1, 2, and 5, and make sure plastics and glass are washed prior to recycling, and cardboard and mixed paper are both dry. Basic steps like this can help dramatically reduce the City of Summit's waste output and set a precedent for the country and state to help save our planet. However, lasting change comes in the form of legislation, so we, students and citizens, are counting on you, our elected officials, to keep this issue at the forefront of your minds as you make decisions that affect the future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, and I thank you for all the work that you've done on the Recycling Advisory Committee. You've raised a lot of good points, and I hope that people out in the audience watching this will take those suggestions to heart. So thank you for your time. And moving on, we've got Laura Soden. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Laura Soden, S-O-D-E-N. I'm from 48 Madison Avenue in Summit, and I'm here tonight to express my dismay over the constant noise coming from Bristol Myers Squibb West Campus with the hope that this council will be able to help us resolve the situation in a timely manner. I've lived in this Summit neighborhood for 42 years, and at my present address since 2003. I've experienced four other pharmaceutical companies owning this campus before Celgene took ownership and began its demolition projects. I believe the current noise has grown increasingly loud and is present all the time, only to be covered by daily construction or campus maintenance noises. When outside in my backyard, there is a pervasive drone with all the other noise, when all the other noises have ended at the end of the day, it's a bass sound with overtones of a high-pitched noise resembling a fan or a squeaking wheel. There is also a constant sound of a caravan of engines idling. Three years ago, I retired from my nursing career of 54 years and was so looking forward to relaxing and enjoying the peace and tranquility of my home and yard that I had previously known, especially in the evenings. This has not been possible for the past two years, as the constant underlying noise is maddening, especially when you're outside. I feel my whole life has been turned upside down, and my quality of life has been diminished by the noise that comes from the Bristol Myers West Campus with no letup. I have entertained selling my home, but I love my home. I do not wish to spend my last 15 to 20 years on this earth in this constant state of anxiety and frustration when it would seem that there's a reasonable solution. So what I'm trying to say is, I would like them to find the source of the noise, fix it, and/or buffer the noise, because we all want to be good neighbors and live in peace. And this is a residential neighborhood and not an industrial park, so I'm hoping that you can please help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Soden, and I have been hearing about these comments, and I think a number of us on council have heard about these and are, you know, we've been trying to find out more from, I understand the Health Department has gotten involved, and also I believe our Department of Community Services Director has also taken a look at this, and we are, you know, we share your concern, and we want to work with you to help address this issue. Mr. Schreger, do you have, or actually, Mayor, do you have something to add? I can't hear her.
Sorry. Thank you, Council President. I have had several conversations with the community relations people at Bristol Myers Squibb. They are working hard to try to find the problem here. They've had a couple of different sound engineers to come in. They have another one coming in that's coming as soon as there's perfect conditions, which will be after the storm. They can't come to the root of the problem, but they are committed to fixing it. So it's not something that is easily determined. I think part of the problem is that buildings were taken down, buffers were removed because of those buildings, but the actual answer is not there yet, but they are aware of it, and they are working hard to try to find the answer. I know that's, I wish I could give you more specifics, but I'm on top of it, and we're trying very hard to find an answer.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Casbo?
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Mayor, and council members. My name is Abe Casbo, K-A-S-B-O. I live at 253 Kent Place Boulevard. Again, we're talking about the noise issue here. About four or five months ago, we began to notice a noise we've never noticed before coming from the direction of the Bristol Myers Squibb campus. Since then, that noise has been persistent on one level or another, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At a minimum, it sounds like a low hum of an aircraft engine. At worst, it's like a non-stop leaf blower. A couple of weeks ago, we have twins that attend Summit High School. They were taking the pre-SAT test and couldn't concentrate, so they had to move to the basement. You can imagine how stressful that is for them and us. Obviously, we want them to perform well. In speaking with our neighbors, I've come to learn that many have been living with this noise for well over a year. Many can't sleep, work, and enjoy their properties. Further to my surprise, this issue has actually been reported to the police and to the city with no resolution. The issue actually has been memorialized in the minutes of the city planning board meeting on December 17, 2018. So the question is, you know, what's going on? And Madam Mayor, you know, I know you just addressed that, but why has it been, you know, why has it been going on for so long without being seriously addressed? About a month ago, we reported the issue to the police. The officer came to our property about 9:00 p.m. He stood there, and he's like, yes, you know, but I can't do anything about it. Yet, if I were playing loud music and disturbing my neighbors, the police would shut me down, no questions asked. The noise pollution coming from that campus affects our community on so many levels, including our health, well-being, and the right to peaceful enjoyment of our homes. I was heartened to read the December 8 op-ed by Council Members Fox, Naido, and O'Sullivan, albeit about cannabis, where they expressed their desire to protect property values in the City of Summit. This is a property values issue. Recently, BMS rep, the guy called me, and very nice, and said to me, look, you know, we're investigating and hiring noise and sound consultants. That is the same line that our fellow Summit residents have heard over the years, including that same sentiment in black and white in the minutes from 2018 that I mentioned earlier. So we're really respectfully asking for your help to meaningfully resolve this issue post-haste. We want the company to be both successful and a good neighbor, as we want to be good neighbors. And thanks for the opportunity to share this issue that impacts so many residents of Summit.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have anything further to add? Okay. So we share your concern, Mr. Casbo, and I, you know, I hope we will be able to partner with you and with Bristol Myers to find a solution to this. Moving on, Lisa Mousher. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
So it is, and it's actually Dixon, mostly Lisa M. Dixon, D-I-X-C-I-C-K-S-O-N, 69 Madison Avenue. I live directly across the street from Bristol Myers Squibb, same issue. Forgive me, Mayor, but I have heard the same thing that you've heard for exactly a year. They are words. I've actually left three messages for you over the last several weeks and haven't heard back from you. I've dealt with Krista Anderson at the city. I've talked to the police many times. The first time I reported this was on November 26, 2019. I'm sorry, 2019. I have talked to Bristol Myers Squibb a minimum of 23 times. I have been placated. I have been marginalized, and they say the same words to me that they say to you, Mayor. We're looking into it. They tell me they don't know what I'm talking about. They haven't heard it. At one point, Yano Sangeli told me to call security, so I did. They came over once, said, wow, that's really loud. That's coming from over at our building. And then they were never allowed to come to my house again. I have many times invited them to come and hear the noise here, because they tell me they can't hear it and they don't know what I'm talking about. I've begged, I've pleaded, I've asked, please make an appointment and come hear it here. And I know other neighbors have said the same thing. They never come. I've been shuttled around from their Director of Facilities to someone who actually is the manager of the Paralegals, who said she often takes care of community issues, to, I was finally told when I said that it was above legal limits, they shuttled me off to their contract attorney. Again, I, you know, I constantly hear, please keep reporting this and let us know when it happens. It happens 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and in every one of my 23 emails, I have said that and described the sound in detail. Again, forgive me, Mayor, a year of this. It's affected our health. It's affected our quality of life. It's affected our ability to work. It's affected our ability to sleep. This needs to stop. And if any of you lived across the street, this would have been taken care of a year ago. This can't continue. So my question to you to wrap this up is, number one, what are you going to do quickly to get this, no more platitudes from them? What are you going to do quickly to get it resolved? They've been saying for a year they're looking into it. They will tell you the same thing for the next year. What are you going to do to get it resolved quickly? And what are we going to do on an ongoing basis? How is the city going to get involved? Bristol Myers Squibb has made it clear that they're not going to play. So what are you going to do to make sure that issues are addressed quickly and effectively going forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. First of all, I'm sorry that I did not return your call because of City Hall being closed. I have not been there. I thought my calls were being transferred to my home phone, but apparently not. So I will make that change, and I'm glad you brought it up to me. So first of all, I'm going to call them tomorrow. I was not aware of this problem until this early fall, so I didn't know this was going on for a year, first of all. But regardless, it needs to be fixed sooner rather than later. I'm very sorry you've been placated by them. That was not the impression I had from talking with them, and I need to have a very serious conversation with them, along with Council President, City Administrator Rogers, you know, whomever we feel we need from our side, from the city side, to get them to focus on this and fix it. If it is something, clearly it's something that's going on 24/7, there's no reason why people from BMS can't come out and listen to it at your home. I don't understand that, and I want to make that happen, and I'd like to be there as well. So I'm sorry that this is going on for so long. I really did not know until this past early fall, and we will look into this and do everything we can to get it done as quickly as, I mean, I can't actually physically fix it, but we can put as much pressure on them as we possibly can.
Thank you.
And moving on, we've got, let's see, Darrell Wilson. Go ahead. You can unmute.
Hello, how you doing? I'm Darrell Wilson. Sounds like you guys are having a big problem with Bristol Myers Squibb there, huh? That's not good.
Yes, can you please state your address before you make your comment?
Sure. 3201 Gates Court, Morris Plains, New Jersey.
Okay.
I'm looking to be a future resident, but I don't know. The sounds of Bristol Myers Squibb is kind of like irritating. You guys are fighting cannabis dispensaries, which is going to be legal in a month, and you guys have other issues that you're not taking care of. I don't understand why this is. Why wouldn't you take care of the noise pollution that people are complaining about? Instead, you guys are worried about future endeavors. Shouldn't you be worried about past complaints first? I think these people may need cannabis to get to sleep. Seems like this has been happening for years, and nobody's doing nothing until somebody says something.
You're pro-cannabis.
Excuse me?
I think that was just interference from another speaker who wasn't muted. I just muted her, so go ahead.
All right. Yeah, so I believe that you guys got to rethink about this cannabis not being in your town because it can be in your town. I could rent the bus and just sit there in a public parking spot and smoke all day long, and there's nothing you could do about it. And guess what? I think we're going to start doing it to these towns until you understand. You're worried about a noise at Bristol Myers Squibbs? Are you kidding me? You guys are going to make millions of dollars off of that? That's why you guys don't care about the noise? Everybody hears it. Seems like it's been a systemic problem for two years now, and nobody's taking care of it, and they claim the old excuse, oh, I didn't know about that. Listen, you, a mayor, are not receiving phone calls at your house? You should know that you should be receiving phone calls. Isn't it weird that you're not getting any phone calls? I mean, you represent the town, you expect people to hear from you, and...
Excuse me, Ms. Wilson, I'm going to interrupt you there. I was not getting phone calls in my office. I get lots of phone calls on my home phone, my cellphone, by email and text. So you don't know what's going on in my world, so I appreciate you're not making those kinds of suggestions.
But that's what you just said.
I said I'm not getting the calls in my office. They were not being transferred to my home. The vast majority of calls I get come on my cellphone.
Well, why don't they go directly to your home?
You know what? We're not going to engage in this back and forth, Mr. Wilson. I would... You know what? We're going to, we're not going to engage in this back and forth, Mr. Wilson. I would encourage you to move along.
Oh, so it's okay for her to go back and forth, but not me?
Mr. Wilson, that's enough. You can stay a comment. This is not a back and forth dialogue. This is a public comment.
Exactly.
Sir, if you don't control yourself, I'm going to ask that you be ejected from the meeting. So make your comment. That's it.
Why? Because I spoke about cannabis and you guys don't like it? Guess what?
No, you can speak it every once.
See? Let me speak. I'm coming to your town.
You have one more minute.
Stop interrupting me. You guys are interrupting me. And I got it recorded right here. I got proof. I'm coming to your town with the bus. I'm going to smoke lots of cannabis. And there's nothing you could do about it. It's the cumul law. Get with the program. Get with 2020. This is not 1970. This is not 1930. Cannabis is legal next month. Two-thirds of New Jerseians want it. And guess what? Two-thirds of New Jerseians are in your town. They're afraid to speak up because they're in your town because your cops will arrest them because they don't know the laws. That's all I'm saying. You guys got to understand the laws and stop hiding and stop saying, oh, I'm going to interrupt you. We can't interrupt the meeting.
Thank you for your.
I'm coming to your town and I'm smoking lots of pot and there's nothing any of you could do about it. How do you like that?
Good comment. Good night. We're moving on to the next comment. Elliot Fishman, go ahead, Mr. Fishman.
Hi, I'll be very brief. I just want to thank the council members.
Mr. Fishman, can you just state your address, please?
Oh, sure. 34 Webster Avenue. Yeah, I'd just like to thank the council members and the mayor for the concern they have expressed about the noise. And just reiterate what my neighbors have been saying, really echo that BMS has pretty much made a mockery of Summit's noise policy. And they have nice community relations persons, people. I spoke with Yanos a year ago about the construction noise. And he does say all the right things, but, and I don't doubt his integrity, but they're all platitudes and he has no power. And the noise is very real. I live a good 400 yards away from the facility. I checked it on a map. And you can hear it quite loudly on Webster Avenue. I took a walk around the block the other day and it really did sound like an aircraft, an airplane idling on the runway at Newark Airport. It sounded like a tarmac of an airport with a live airplane engine there. And I just cannot imagine what the people in Madison and Lafayette are putting up with. So I just want to support my neighbors and echo their concerns. Their concerns and grievances are very legitimate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. All right, moving on. I've got one with a phone number that, Madam Clerk, how do we handle this phone number?
Is it there? Tasteful.
We need to, we need to mute Mr. Fishman. Madam Clerk, how do we deal with just phone numbers listed?
We'll have to ask them to state their name and address, and then I can change the phone number.
Okay.
To the name.
All right, so I've got a 732 number. Go ahead. Go ahead and unmute yourself, okay?
Hello?
Hi, can you state your name and address, please?
How you doing? This is Mike Vingelaos. The last name is V I N T Z I L E O L E O S. And my address is 264 John Street in South Amboy.
Okay.
Madam President, could you have him spell his last name again, please?
Yeah, could you go ahead and spell that again, please, sir?
Yes. V I N T Z I L E O S.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead with your comment.
I'm a medical cannabis patient and I want to just state that, well, I want to thank you guys for leaving medical out of the ordinance. That is correct, right? Medical is not part of the ordinance.
That's correct. Medical is allowed.
Yes, that's my reason for calling, and I wanted to thank you for leaving that out. That's what's important to me. I think a lot of patients, they get passionate about the fact that the benefits don't just come with the card. But my reason for calling right now is to thank you guys for leaving medical out of the ordinance. That's very important to me, and I'm glad that you guys did that.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
All right, and moving on. See, Ryan Felmit, go ahead, Mr. Felmit.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. First of all, I just want, Ryan Felmit, 57 Madison Ave. Definitely wanted to echo, and I saw the news on the Grace Anonymous match up through the end of the year. And I think that's an excellent summit-worthy type of issue that we see on a very common basis. And that's what our city stands for, so I'm very proud to see that. But I'm also calling in regards to the BMS Bristol Myers Web Noise Issue on neighbors of many of these people. I live pretty much directly across from the campus down on 57 Madison, across from Laura, who spoke earlier, and close to a lot of these other folks. And I just want to make sure that I'm on record because this noise issue is a 24/7 constant issue. I know you might hear it more than once, but it's worth noting. You know, I moved here in 2014 and under a different campus, under Celgene or whoever it was before then, we never had any issues with noise, construction, anything until up to last year with the demolition. During the demolition of a couple of buildings, it came to a point where things in our home were shaking. At that point, we had a one-year-old kid and my wife was pregnant. I didn't have the opportunity to join some of these meetings due to working long hours in the city, but I do have the opportunity to speak now. So what I'm concerned about is addressing this issue and doing it the most efficient way possible. And I understand and I appreciate what the mayor said about it being a top priority. I'm also a little bit concerned about the ongoing, so demolition to the noise to now we have a planning board meeting for a 10,000-square-foot construction site coming up in the next week. And it could become a multi-year knock-on effect. And that's just more things that we're going to have to wind down. So when I stare, I just went outside before this meeting, the airport noise that whoever mentioned is still there. The lights are on pretty much 24/7. They come right through our windows. This is not something that when we moved here, we moved into. So as another speaker mentioned, home values are obviously of importance to the residents and to the council views that, and also not singling out certain areas of the town. So I think that's exactly what's happening in real time. So just in closing, I heard all the comments. I appreciate it. Kind of what Lisa said, is there any tactical things that you have in mind, Mayor? Or that for next steps as it relates to this? I said, I heard you said you were going to meet with them, like, should we expect to hear from you in some sort of, at this meeting or a different type of way? And then my second question is to the chief, from a police matter, it really gets bad enough where it affects us during the middle of the night. So with, again, with two young kids and things like that. Is this a police, should we be calling the police if we literally cannot, you know, deal with the noise? Because it gets to that point. I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
So first, Madam Mayor, do you have?
Good evening, Mr. Felmit. I, at this point, have nothing set up for a meeting with them. I said I would like to go there to Mrs. Ms. Dixon's home, where she said it was 24/7. I guess several residents have said that, and meet with Bristol Myers Squibb there, or a representative of them. I have not set that up. I am going and making a phone call tomorrow to BMS. I'm going to talk to Michael Rogers and our city, our council president, to determine what next steps, along with our chief of police, and we will figure out next steps. But the first thing I'm, so that's what I'm, first thing I'm going to do is call tomorrow, but I don't have a strategic plan set up right now.
Got it. Thank you.
And Chief Bartolotti, do you want to respond to the, to the question about the police, please?
Yes, absolutely. First, I'd like to point out, thank you, Madam President, to all the residents that called in and those that are listening or not on the call that have experienced this. We have heard you and we understand greatly the inconvenience and the troubles this has caused. So as the mayor said, we will meet as a city government and an organized group to figure out what the next steps are here. Mr. Felmit, with regards to your question and calling in the middle of the night, we were requesting that residents do do that so that we could track this information. We have gotten to the point where we have observed our, from our own observations, as well as working in conjunction with code enforcement from the city and the Health Department and contacts over at Bristol Myers Squibb, and just numerous folks that have called, emailed, and come on council meetings to express their concerns. At this point, we do not need to document any further the situation that's going on out there. It's well documented and well understood. And as the mayor pointed out, you know, we're in the next phase now where we're going to leverage as much as we can as a city organization to get this rectified for the community.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Felmit. Edward Grimes, go ahead, Mr. Grimes. Go ahead, Mr. Grimes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, could you please state your name and address?
My name is Edward Grimes, 84 Hanover Road, East Hanover. Talking about your ordinance banning cannabis, I want to do, I do echo Bonholio's sentiments about not banning medical. And I appreciate that, that you did not ban medical. However, there was a mandate, and you're going against the will of the people. It wasn't just a small win. It was two-thirds vote. That your constituents have voted for cannabis, and you're going against the will of your own people. And you're claiming that you don't know what they voted for. Well, they know what they voted for. I don't know how you don't know what they voted for. Your town does not treat cannabis patients well at all. A couple of years ago, a cannabis patient was arrested in your town for a joint. You made this cannabis patient, a person of color, by the way, go through, jump through hoops. He had to go take off work four times to go to court to prove that he was a medical cannabis patient over a joint. A joint. You ruined this patient's life over a joint. And this guy, he was a cardholder. He was pulled over for having tinted windows. They couldn't just give him a window tint ticket. No, a person of color, they had to pull him out of the car and chain him to a wall like they've chained other people of color to walls that have been, in Haddon Heights. They pulled over my friend in Haddon Heights for the same thing, for driving while black. We're sick of this. We're sick of the racist element of this drug war. The drug war is racist, and I can prove it. There was a man named Harry Anslinger who went in front of Congress and said things like this. "There are over 100,000 total marijuana smokers in the U.S. Most are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, and entertainers. Their satanic music, jazz, and swing result from marijuana usage. This marijuana causes white women to seek sexual relations with Negroes, entertainers, and others. This is why cannabis is illegal, and this is the stigma that you and Summit are continuing." You're continuing this stigma. Here, here's some more of Harry Anslinger's quotes. "Marijuana influences Negroes to look at white people in the eye, step on white men's shadows, and look at white women twice." This is disgusting, and you guys are continuing, continuing this stigma and this treatment of people of color, especially cannabis patients, people of color who are cannabis patients that have jumped through all the hoops that you've asked them. It's still not good enough. You're still going to arrest them and put them through your system and make them go to court four times in Summit, four times. This man had to go to court with his family and his child because he couldn't get time off from work. He had to bring his whole family to court with him. Are you kidding me? This is compassion and love? This is not good Christian behavior. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of Summit. I'm in Summit all the time. I'm ashamed for you. "They shall grow not old as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn. At the going down of the sun, and in the morning, we will remember them." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Jamie Van Skyver, go ahead. Please state your, please state your name and address.
Jamie Van Skyver, 427 Greenwich Avenue in Palter, New Jersey.
Okay, go ahead with your comment, please.
Yeah, I would like to start off with a quote from the mayor. It's on the City of Summit page. "As mayor, I pledge to listen, to work hard for you every day, and to be a forceful and effective advocate, and to always endeavor to be visible, engaged, open-minded, accountable, and ever-focused on the needs, interests, and concerns of the entire community. I promise to be a visible advocate for all of Summit. To me, that means everything from cultivating our corporate neighbors so that they continue to provide jobs, revenue, and services to Summit, to make calmly sitting in the county to make sure we get our fair share, to making sure that Summit delivers for our youth as well as our seniors." I feel that last week, so many people were called into the Zoom meeting. 67% of the state voted with recreational legalization. The majority, one person of an email, was against it. All others were for. The Zoom people were for, and the emails people were for. You admittedly said that you do not know what the people want, yet you rush to make a decision when there's nothing happening. And it concerns me now, especially like being on the call this evening and hearing everyone talk about such a large pharmaceutical company like BMS, and that there actually has been how many police reports and how many concerns and noise complaints? And the audacity to ask these people to continue to report when they say it's 24/7? You need to have someone out there stationed collecting their own data. It's been a year and you guys have done nothing for these people. This is infringing on their quality of life and well-being. This is infringing on their property values, not the false information that you're trying to put out there about any kind of dispensary being. Because Mrs. Zito then corrected you with proper statistics about property value around dispensaries. I want to know, are you getting any money from BMS? Are you keeping out the cannabis industry? Why are you allowing them to infringe on your community to lower property values? These people are talking about wanting to move. It's been a year. Are they paying you off? And for an adult in such your position, I've never seen anyone roll their eyes so much. It's embarrassing. Happy holidays.
Thank you for your comment. Good night. All right. Let's see, Lisa Dixon, I see that you still have your hand up. Did you have another comment or was that just? Or was your hand just up? Ms. Dixon, did you have another comment? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. Okay, Nick Vander Linden, go ahead. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Perfect. Thanks so much. My name is Nick Vander Linden, and I live on 59 Madison Avenue. My spelling of Vander Linden is V A N D E R L I N D E N. First and foremost, just want to make a comment around the comments that have been coming around the cannabis and how they have kind of weaved in the BMS issue into their discussion. I hope the, the members of the council will understand that that is in no way what we're talking about and hope that the severity of the issue for BMS is taken apart from these comments. I just wanted to speak and really support, you know, my neighbors in the area who have also spoken today. So it's going to be a lot of the same, but there is a constant, unrelenting, high-pitched hum coming from what I believe to be the cooling towers on the roofs of the BMS campus. And it's directly impacting the quality of life for many surrounding the neighborhood. Being a newer member to the community, I was really unaware of this issue due to the construction at the site when we were looking to purchase our home. And much to my displeasure, I've learned very quickly what was going on in our first few weeks here. To date, we have not slept with our windows open as the noise is so clearly heard. It keeps us up at night. Over the summer, we have to have the air conditioning running at all hours of the day just to drown out the noise from entering our home. And, you know, my wife is pregnant. We're expecting our first. And the constant stress and this, of this unrelenting noise, you know, really worries me for the health and wellness of our family. And I'm encouraged to hear everyone's comments today about how seriously you're looking into this and, you know, just hope that, you know, we can come to a very swift and decisive action to help get this out of the way. Because in hearing from our other, from our neighbors, you know, the comment's been, we're looking into it from BMS. And I think the time for looking into it is over and the time for fixing it has come. So just really here to support our neighbors and hope to find a resolution with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vander. Thank you, Mr. Vander Linden, I appreciate your comments, and we share your concern, and, you know, we will try to, you know, keep up communications on this, and once we do reach out to BMS, we will let, you know, we will let you guys know where we are on things, so, you know, please keep coming back and talking to us about this. And moving on, I see Abe Casbo has his hand up again. Miss, did you have another comment, Mr. Casbo? What was that, just a... Okay, I'm going to take that as a no extra comment. Um, all right, so if no one else has anything, any public comments, we are going to move on to the, to ordinances for hearing. So, the comment period is now closed. So, moving on, we have an ordinance for hearing, a finance ordinance, Madam Clerk, could you please read that title?
An ordinance authorizing emergency appropriations pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-three.
Councilmember Vartan, would you like to take this, please?
First thing, thank you, Council President. This ordinance was introduced at the last council meeting on December first, two thousand and twenty, and as discussed then, it authorizes an emergency appropriation of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make up for lost revenue in the parking utility. This option has been made available by the State of New Jersey's Division of Local Government Services in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This allows the city to raise the lost revenue over the course of five years, rather than apply the lost revenue in its entirety from the fund balance in the budget year two thousand and twenty-one. As a reminder, starting in budget year two thousand and twenty-two, the utility's budget will have a line item of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the following five years to fund this appropriation. We must exercise this option, or else the utility will no longer be self-liquidating. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, so are there any, are there any comments from members of council on this? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so, any other, any other comments from members of council? Okay, Councilmember Bowman, go ahead.
I basically just want to thank our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, for doing this, this paperwork, and, you know, this is, is vital for the, for the parking utility to be a viable and a goal and concern over the next seven years. So, thank you to Tammy for doing it, and I think it's a smart thing to do.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could we, oh, any members of the public have a comment on this? Mr. Vander Linden, I see your hand is up, is that for this, or was that just a hand that was up before? Okay, looks like we've just got some raised hands here. Okay, so, hearing no other comments, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Madam President, I think we just closed the hearing.
Right, closed the hearing, I realized that afterwards. Okay, so, so the hearing is now closed, we'll move on to finance, the second finance ordinance, could you please read the title?
Yes, ordinance twenty-three-two-two-seven, and ordinance amending and ordinance establishing a procedure in connection with the payment of bills and claims against the City of Summit.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance was also introduced at the last council meeting. This ordinance revises the city's procedure for payment of bills in order to comply with laws about prompt payment. Previously, bills and claims must have been presented to the city treasurer for consideration for payment by the Friday immediately prior to a council meeting. This ordinance updates that timeframe, meaning bills and claims must be presented to the city treasurer by close of business five days before the council meeting. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, the hearing is closed, and we'll move on to the third ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read that one?
Yes, ordinance number twenty-three-two-two-eight, and ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven Traffic, Section seven-eight Parking, Subsection seven-eight-point-six All Night Parking Prohibited, and seven-two-five Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, Subsection seven-two-five-point-four Regulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance was introduced at the last council meeting, and it is an ordinance to amend our parking rules to allow for overnight permitted, permitted parking on specific-named municipal streets for people who live in dwellings with ten or more units. To be precise, this ordinance will not allow for overnight parking on the street if you live on a county road. Besides that, all other overnight parking will remain prohibited throughout the city except for these named streets with multiple dwelling units that have ten or more units. Additionally, this ordinance implements a price increase for quarterly overnight parking from seventy-five dollars to one hundred dollars, and for senior citizens from fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents to seventy-five dollars. These price adjustments are the first increase since two thousand and six. These changes are set to go into effect on January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, terrific. Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. This is a very simple thing, but it's been a dream of mine for some time. One in five people in Summit live in an apartment. Hundreds of those people who live in the city do not have access to parking overnight. Many of these people pay to park their cars in city lots, or they're often several blocks from their buildings. Some people simply park overnight on the street and get tickets all the time. This ordinance is a narrow change in policy that adds an affordable and convenient option for those people who need it, and a new revenue source for the parking utility in a time of extreme budget challenge. In other words, for me, it's a win-win. I'm extremely thankful to Rita McNanny, Director of Parking Services, and Chief Andrew Bartolati for their work in helping us get this done. I am thrilled to vote in support of this resolution, and I shamelessly encourage my esteemed colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Hairston, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Council President, and I wholeheartedly endorse this ordinance. I do want to raise a concern that I am sure our Department of Community Services will be able to manage. I'm thinking of the storm and the snow removal, and so I would, I'm not sure what that, what thoughts are in mind for overnight parking when we have the storms and how that will be handled. Nonetheless, this is a very good change that is available for my neighbors who are in these dwellings, but I did want to hear what we're doing for the parking with storms.
Mr. Schreger, can you answer that question? Or Ms. McNanny, I don't know who has the answer to that.
Certainly, it's a combination of us and the Police Department, where really when we declare a snow emergency, there is no parking on the streets regardless of time, so we can proceed with snow plowing in a safe and effective manner. So, that will be in effect for this storm, so that's even during the daytime, so we, it would be covered under that as well.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification. Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I, I had focused on the first aspect of this ordinance, which is, which I wholeheartedly support with regarding to the, of having increased parking for folks who live in apartment buildings on city streets and in the specific neighborhoods that were identified. But I do want to hear a little bit more for the rationale for changing the fee structure at this present time. I think we're all cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of people who are struggling, and I understand that our parking utility is also having an issue because of the decrease in the usage, especially from people like me who used to commute every single day into the city and were not, and who may not going forward as well, and so our parking demand may decrease, that's an unknown, but I get the short term, we have a, have a problem. But I would like to hear a little bit more, maybe from our Director of Parking Services or from some of the folks who are more intimately involved in the discussions around it, why it makes sense to do it now. And I apologize, I mean, I wish I had thought about this earlier and, and asked folks earlier when it was introduced or something like that, but I did not, but I focused on the first aspects of it, so I apologize.
Rita, are you available to answer a question on this?
Sure, and when we were discussing it, you know, again, the thinking of having the ability for someone to park right outside the complex is a great benefit to them, as well as those that live in the downtown and park within one of our parking lots or garages. And the thought was, because there hasn't been a price increase since two thousand and six, was while we were doing this ordinance, to make the increase at this time. I will let you know that at one time I lived in West Orange, it's got to be, I'd say, thirty-plus years ago, and at that time, I was paying thirty dollars a month. So, it is in line with what the normal cost should be at, that we've kept it low for many years, so we just felt it was time, because it is a great benefit for these residents that this would be the cost to do so.
Okay, thank you for, for that explanation. Are there any other comments from members of council? A councilmember Little?
I just want to speak briefly in support of this as well. This is something I've heard many times while out canvassing and talking to residents that, about this issue, there's many of our apartment complexes don't have parking areas within them, and this is, you know, as we said, we have one in five residents who are renters, and this has been a really, a struggle that we've heard, we've heard a lot about this. I'm really happy that the, this committee looked at the options and came up with this, what seems like a very reasonable option, and, and I would be in support of the raise in the parking, I think for the added convenience that is afforded to people who have been asking for this for, for a very long time. I think that it seems like a reasonable increase in the rate and would also help ease the pressures on the parking service right now. So, this seems like it was a well-thought-out and very reasonable compromise on the part of everyone, and I really want to thank the committee for coming up with this solution.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Are there any comments from members of the public? Okay, I don't see any, any other comments from members of council. I agree that this was, this, you know, I heard this too when I was campaigning, that there were residents who didn't have places to park, and they were, this, that was sort of their top concern, so I'm really pleased that we, that the committee has addressed this issue, and I think this is a really good solution to the problem, so I support this ordinance as well. So, moving on, let's see, we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration now.
Council President, just officially close the hearing.
Okay, yes, by my oversight there. Okay, the, this hearing is closed, and we'll move on now to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, can you read the first finance ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number twenty-three-two-two-six, and ordinance authorizing an emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-three.
Thank you, and Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance authorizes a special emergency appropriation in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the parking utility as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. As we just held the hearing on this ordinance, I move to adopt this ordinance.
I second.
All right, could we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to the second finance ordinance for final consideration, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty-three-two-two-seven, and ordinance amending and ordinance establishing a procedure in connection with the payment of bills and claims against the City of Summit.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. As discussed, this ordinance updates the procedure for payment of bills. As the hearing on this ordinance has just been closed, I move to adopt it.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to community programs and parking services. Madam Clerk, could you read that last ordinance, please?
Ordinance twenty-three-two-two-eight, and ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven Traffic, Section seven-eight Parking, Subsection seven-eight-point-six All Night Parking Prohibited, and seven-two-five Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, Subsection seven-two-five-point-four Regulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. As we just discussed in our hearing to amend our parking rules, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye, motion carries. And now we're moving on to resolutions, and we have quite a few finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to go ahead and get started?
First thing, thank you, Council President, this is ID number seven-five-two-eight. This resolution actually establishes a COVID-nineteen special emergency for the parking utility. It approves the certification by the Chief Financial Officer to the Department of Local Government Services, and allows for the issuance of special emergency notes if needed. They are highly likely to be needed. Of course, no one likes the idea of the parking utility borrowing money, but as I mentioned at the last council meeting, we saw this coming, and we are very lucky to have the option to handle it in this way. We will see in January what the actual deficit is and discuss the exact nature of the special emergency notes to be issued at that time. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, one last chance for council to comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven-five-nine-eight. This resolution authorizes the execution of an agreement with Union County for reimbursement to the city for CARES Act funding. The city previously applied for more than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding, but this application adds more for the city and also includes the applications for both the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad and the Mountain Valley Emergency Communication Center. Our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, spent a ton of time on this, including working over weekends, to complete everything on time. I am thankful to her for her hard work, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Any comments from council, Councilmember Naidoo?
All I can say is I hope we get more money in the next, coming up year through the, hopefully, the federal government does its job and passes a relief bill that includes money for local and state municipalities.
Let's hope so.
And, and that hopefully we can get some of that money to reimburse the city, and hopefully they pass also this week something to do with, bit smaller. small businesses because our businesses, as the mayor previously said, we should be shopping for our local businesses because they're struggling. And we need the federal government and our federal legislatures and our folks in the state to pay attention to these issues and get these things done.
I couldn't agree more. And as far as this, it looks like we do have one comment. Mr. Felmit, go ahead.
Hello, Council. Hey, Councilman Naidoo, just a quick question on the back of the CARES Act funding, which I totally agree we need more money. And I think I saw some reference to it maybe in the capital budget briefing. But it has the council examined the potential of bonding with its high credit rating and a low interest rate environment? And kind of like what would be, may not have specifics, but how are we thinking about that right now in terms of timing and the need for cash? It's not just, it's just an open question. I'm not sure if not directed at anyone specifically.
Right. Well, thank you for your comment. Generally, my, we do not bond for operating expenses. I'm going to turn this over either to Tammy or Michael to elaborate further.
Council President, I'll speak to that. Yes, you're correct. The capital budget is tied to some type of finance financing mechanism in the debt markets. What we're talking about with CARES Act reimbursement has to do with our operating budget and how that's financed is through other revenues or property tax revenues. There is no financing for operating appropriations in our our general budget. So you are correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And but I think I'd like to commend Tammy Baldwin, our CFO, for doing such a great job and collecting all this information for the CARES Act reimbursements. This is is a big help to us. And she's been a champion in terms of documenting and gathering up a huge amount of information. So I think this is, you know, a really positive thing. So with that, if there are no more comments, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to finance number three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven-six-zero-one. This resolution authorizes the transfer of funds within the 2020 operating budget from accounts with a balance to those within sufficient funds. This is a common occurrence at the end and beginning of a budget year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Sorry. Aye, I unmute.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to finance number four, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is ID number seven-six-zero-three and it authorizes the cancellation of unexpended funds within the 2020 municipal operating budget. The amount of funding being canceled is four hundred thousand dollars. This money offsets revenue deficits in the current fund. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second it.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to finance number five. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven-five-nine-seven. This resolution authorizes a six-month contract extension for payroll services, human resources, time and attendance services with Prime Point LLC. The city has two contracts with this same vendor dealing with all of these services. In the future, it would be better to have one contract for all of these services. This measure allows the city to review the parameters of the contracts and create a request for proposal that effectively represents our needs. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
So we're going to just take this a little out of order. You just did finance six. So we'll we'll flip them around.
Well, darn.
It's okay. We'll just take them out of order. We're flexible here. Any comments on finance number six from members of council? Okay, comments from members of the public? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And let's go back to finance five, just to keep things interesting.
Making sure everybody at home is paying attention.
Yeah. We're paying attention up here.
Everybody here is paying attention. Thank you, Council President. This one is ID number seven-five-nine-six. This resolution authorizes an amendment to the City of Summit Rabbi Trust Deferred Compensation Plan. Rabbi Trust was created in 2001 to replace the longevity payment plans for new hires in the police and fire departments. As a result of recent changes to the PBA contract, the plan will be amended to reflect updates to the vesting schedule for police officers hired after January first, 2020. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And we're moving on to finance number seven. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven-five-nine-one. This resolution authorizes a contract agreement for risk management consultant services for 2021 with Akrasure LLC. The fees charged for this service are six percent of the municipal joint insurance funds premium. This company is the city's current risk manager and we are very pleased with the services. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have one last finance resolution. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven-five-eight-nine. This resolution authorizes a continuation of the shared service agreement with the Borough of Madison for information technology support services in 2021. In a year that has certainly highlighted IT services, we are pleased to continue this agreement. The total amount of the agreement is not to exceed ninety-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman.
Yeah, basically, I just want to say this is a great example of shared services and how they do more than just answer responding, you know, our problems. They have identified areas where we have been able to improve our services as well as our our cyber protection. They and we don't have to have them on our payroll. This is a this is a program that we should look at other services within our city government and in an attempt to to maintain fiscal conservancy, I guess.
Thank you for that comment. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we're now moving on to law and labor. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number seven-five-eight-five is to authorize 2021 legal services in excess of seventeen thousand five hundred for the city solicitor as well as Labor Council. Services of Law Office of Cleary, Jacob, Alphari and Jacobs. I've been servicing Summit for the last four years. And in particular, partner Matthew Jacob has been doing it. And this time period will cover night or January through December. And the anticipated cost is not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, like the shared services, this is a cost savings that we are not having to add personnel. And and they have provided us with strong legal representation. I move this resolution.
I second it. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then.
Very much.
Thank you. Glad you're aboard for another year, Matt. Moving on to law and labor number two, Councilmember Bowman.
Resolution number seventy-six-hundred is an authorization of extension of the 2020 tow operator's license through February twenty-eighth. Unfortunately, we have to extend it because the Department of Motor Vehicles is accepting or only allowing people to go in for appointments. And our tow operators have some paperwork that they need to present to us to extend to 2021. And in order to facilitate that, we will extend their license through February twenty-first so they can get the proper documentation. I move this resolution.
I second it. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. I think at our last meeting, finance beat me in the resolution game, but I'm gonna edge him out by one this time.
Yeah, but you're gonna bundle, so maybe not.
With your permission, I'm going to bundle a few of my resolutions.
Okay.
Capital Projects First Resolution is number seven-five-eight-two, which is to authorize expenditure from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the rehabilitation of units at Glenwood Place. This resolution is the expenditure of funds that were already approved by council. There was a total of four hundred thousand dollars that was approved out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to do some work at Glenwood Stairwells and Patio Doors. And this is for the reimbursement of the work as completed. And in particular, for the patio and patio doors and windows at Glenwood Place in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty-four dollars and eight cents. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. And I'm Cap. Well, Projects Resolution number two is number seven-five-nine-four and it's to authorize execution of an addendum to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Summit and the Parkline Foundation. As we've been discussing for quite some time, the Parkline Foundation is an independent not-for-profit organization whose mission is to assist the city in raising funds, developing and maintaining the park line area. We entered into a memorandum of understanding back in 2018, which delineated the rules of the each party in respect to the development of this park. At this time, the foundation just did a presentation to the council, which went over some of the construction plans. And we are here seeking another addendum to the memorandum of understanding, which just further delineates responsibility and allows the construction documents to be drawn up on the part of the Parkline Foundation. So I ask that we approve this memory, this resolution at this time.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? A councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to add to Councilwoman Little's summary, which I think hits the right points, obviously. But I just want to just add to the fact that as we have discussed this project over the last few years, I think what I really appreciate now is the fact that through the memorandum of understanding and now through this addendum, we have a basic sense of what this project will turn out to be. And we have a set of plans, a preliminary set of plans, that will have more detailed construction drawings based upon, obviously. But we know kind of where the rules of the road of this project are. And there's things that obviously will still need to be developed and found out. But I think this memorandum, especially especially this addendum, makes it very clear what it what things will look like and how they will look like. And that's what the community had always wanted. And I think we've delivered on that promise. This is going to be a city project. It is going to be funded through the foundation. We're going to work well with everyone, I hope, and intent. But I believe that to be the case. And I think we're going to be able to deliver something then that is consistent with the city's goals as well as for the community's goals, for having a park line that achieves both privacy, accessibility, as well as a new area for which people can use for walking and biking and so forth. So with that, I support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Does anyone else on council have any comments? Okay, I see Rob Rubino. Go ahead, Dr. Rubino. Go ahead.
I believe the words, can you hear me, your little spoken words in the last nine months.
We've got it.
Business Zoom calls. So thank you for the opportunity to address the council. Good evening, members of council. I wanted to just start by saying it's been a long road to get here. This project started in late 2014, early 2015. It's basically just a vision of taking some fallow land in the City of Summit and recapturing the less than one percent raw land, natural land that we still have here in this fully developed community. And I think we're well on our way to turning what was largely brown space into green space. And I really appreciate all the efforts of everybody in the community and the community organizations, not-for-profit and business businesses and individual residents who've contributed their time, their talent and their money to get this project up and going and become sustainable. I also wanted to thank, in particular, the dedicated board members of Summit Parkline Foundation who have met tirelessly every month for the last six years, moving this project forward as well as reaching out to their individual contacts professionally and personally to continue to help generate support and add their own individual skill sets to the project, as well as sitting members of the governing body who've helped us along. I have to point out, in particular, David Naidoo, who has really been a thoughtful advocate for the project, starting out maybe a little bit equivocal about it. Over time, he's added his perspective, which has been quite helpful, as well as his enthusiasm. And I think he's also coming delivering on a promise to his kids to make sure this project becomes realized. So I'm excited that we're at this point that we're hopefully going to be adding an amenity of nature to the city. But it's also, more importantly, I've always said this, the park line's so much more than just that. It's about connectivity, connecting neighbors to nature, to neighborhoods, to downtown, to the parks. And I hope to bring my grandkids there one day. And also, I just also want to thank Steve Bowman as well, who's also been a quiet and strong advocate all along. Hopefully, Steve, you'll come back to these parts to visit the park line often. And I just want to just express my gratitude for everybody involved with the project. And I'm glad we're at this point.
Thank you for your comment. And we look forward to a part, you know, a productive partnership in getting this park built. And I think this mechanism with the MOU, the memorandum of understanding is a good way of keeping this process public facing. So at each step along the way, there's a process for council to consider and also give the public an opportunity to weigh in as decisions are made. So it creates an orderly process to get from point A to point B. So are there any other comments from members of council or members of the public? All right. All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Capital Projects number three, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects number three is number 7537. And this is to authorize the 2021 Earth Day activities. This year, we had a very different Earth Day celebration here in Summit. We're hoping to go back to more of the same types of activities that we've had in the past with in-person cleanup. And, you know, different groups working in the city, we all have our fingers crossed for that. So I'm hoping to authorize that taking place in the city. This will be the 15th Earth Day that will be celebrated in Summit. And we are looking at doing it on April 10th, which is a Saturday with a rain date of April 11th at various locations throughout the city. If needed, we will of course modify this, but we are very much hoping that it will be an Earth Day similar to those that have occurred before 2020 and not the celebration we had this year. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Nigel.
I, I don't know if, if everyone knows, but our own council president was instrumental in getting the first Earth Day started here in Summit. So 15 years later, Marjorie, keep it going.
Actually, 16 years later, but we had, we took a skip for a year. So it is a project near and dear to my heart, but.
As well as mine, as you know, for years, so.
And I look forward to, you know, last year didn't feel quite the same on Earth Day when we didn't have that cleanup. So I'm hoping, fingers crossed, for April 10th and April 11th. So any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects number four, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. With your permission, I'm going to do resolutions four through eight together.
Yes.
So Capital Projects Resolutions four through eight are all to authorize different services for the Department of Community Services. Resolution number four is number 7547, and that is to authorize consultant planning services with Burgess Associates. Number five is to authorize 2020 engineering services for traffic survey in general with Mazer Consulting. Number six is to authorize 2021 engineering services for sanitary sewer, sewer survey in general with Neglia Engineering Associates. Seven is engineering services for design survey, construction inspection in general with Boswell Engineering. And number eight is consultant engineering services for LSRP survey in general.
Think you need to unmute, Councilmember Little.
Yep, I was just looking, that one was with Matt McDonald. It wasn't in the section that I was looking at, but with Matt McDonald. All of these consultant services are with firms that the city has used in the past. We have gone with the services not to exceed numbers from previous years and not from this past year, as this year, the numbers were quite a bit lower due to the pandemic and not doing as many capital projects. So we are looking at services not to exceed numbers that are based more on past year services than on this year, in case anyone had any questions about that. But they are all firms that the city has employed in the past. We've been extremely happy with their services. And I ask that we approve resolutions four through eight at this time.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Nigel.
Well, it's not exactly completely on point. I think it's important that a lot of these folks work with our own city departments, especially Department of Community Services, which will tell you and, and Director Schreger is on, on the call of what an active year we've had actually for construction in the city. And that's actually a really good piece of news, I think. Maybe we should share with the public so they're aware that even during this pandemic, the investment that residents and new folks who are coming into our town are making is quite significant with regard to how many permits are being sought for construction and rehab in our town. But I just wanted to point that out in this context of hiring consultants to assist us overall with this type of work.
Thank you, Councilmember Nigel. Mr. Schreger, did you have anything you would like to add on this?
Just to follow up with that, we did, from an engineering perspective, permit wise, we will have accepted more permits than we have since 2008. And probably that, which would be the second highest year since we've been keeping records. So it does show there's been quite a bit of activity. And then at the peak of the pandemic, when the governor did permit construction to continue, we did have a very busy year and got most of our 2019 projects done this year. And now we're, we're ready to head into 2021, completing all our 2020 budget projects. So we're in a good place. It was very busy. We were able to use in-house staff to save quite a bit of money as opposed to consultants this past year. Next year, we'll, you know, we'll have it at our disposal to use that if we want, but we'll, we'll try to do a balancing act of, of budget and what we can staff.
Thank you, Director Schreger. I just wanted to clarify also that, that these not to exceed contracts doesn't mean we'll be spending all of that money. Each of these, of these engineering firms has a different specialty. And my understanding is that with each capital project, the engineering firms are engaged to do whatever kinds of work needs to be done to assist the city in that particular project. And the funding then comes with the capital budget to fund that, that project and to also pay the engineering staff. Did I get that right, Director Schreger?
That's correct, yes.
So if you add it all up, we're not spending all that money necessarily. And it's all coming out of capital funds, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on, we have one last one, correct, Councilmember Little?
That's correct. The final Capital Projects Resolution, number nine, is number 7575. And it's to declare a vacancy for the Assistant City Engineer position. This position has come vacant because of the promotion of Aaron Schreger to Acting Director of Community Services and the promotion of Rick Mathias to City Engineer. So we have an opening for an Assistant City Engineer. This will be a position they'll come on and have the benefit of the mentorship of both Rick Mathias and Aaron Schreger. So we are looking forward to filling this position. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Do we have a second?
David, do you second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I was.
Just say second, please. All right, all those, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on, we've got the consent agenda. We usually take this agenda as a whole unless anyone from the council or the public want to break anything out separately to discuss. So if I don't, if, if there is no need to do that, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now moving on to council members' comments or new business. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. I just have, I just want to speak, I know we've already City Administrator Michael Rogers and the mayor both spoke about the coming storm and some of the delays. I just want to thank Aaron Schreger and his staff. They have worked very hard getting ready for this storm. And in conjunction with the COVID pandemic, there were a lot of new procedures and new protocols that need to be put in place. A lot of the DPW workers during big storms all stay at the DPW garage and bunk together, eat together. The trucks are used by multiple people. So there was a lot, there's been a lot of work and a lot of effort and a lot of planning and forethought that have gone into planning for this storm. And I really want to thank Acting Director Schreger and his staff for, for getting ready and for, for doing such a good job thinking through all the possibilities. And just ask that the city residents be patient during this first storm of the season. We didn't have a lot of snow last season. So, and we're acting under totally new rules with the COVID pandemic. So I hope everyone is patient tomorrow as we work through this. But I want to thank everyone in advance for all the hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Any other comments, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I have, I have two things. One is to echo Councilwoman Little a bit. You know, like basically everything we're doing now that's related to emergency response is like an emergency on top of an emergency, considering the pandemic. You know, so I want to shout out the good work that everyone at the city has been doing. I think it's, it's worth mentioning publicly that, you know, we had a lot of discussion throughout the end of the summer and the fall about JCPN L communicating not only with us, but directly with customers. Earlier in the day, or possibly even yesterday, PSE and G was very proactive in sending out an email about how they were preparing. JCPN L did something similar, but only to sort of stakeholders and not to regular customers who might be worried about what will happen if their power goes out in a giant snowstorm in the winter in the middle of pandemics. So I think, you know, I think JCPN L certainly has a process that they're going through and they can't know what's going to happen until it does. But it, they could communicate, I think that they're, that they're preparing to people, and I do believe that that would be helpful. So I want to just say that publicly. That's the first thing. The second thing is when I was 17, 10 years ago, I, I knew, I still know a police officer named Jerry McDermott. And he encouraged me to become a member, a junior member of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad. And I, and I did that and I, and I love it. Through that experience, I've, I've learned that most people when, when you're doing CPR, don't have that much luck. The people usually don't make it, unfortunately. But Jerry McDermott, I think, more than anybody else I know, has saved people doing CPR more than any other person that I've ever met. Chief Bartolotti let us know that last week there was an incident and Jerry McDermott again saved a person's life. So I just want to call out that great work and say congrats again on that. And also to the other officers, Scarpello and Walsh that were involved. So thank you again, everyone, and that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Nigel.
Thank you, Council President. So this is our last council meeting for the year. And I think it's a good time to reflect on the fact of that this has been a long, tough year for lots of members of our community, for lots of members and even city staff. And they've got, and people who have served as well. And I think we should take a moment and realize that we're all in this together. We all have to be patient with each other, that we can all get through the tough times if we focus on it as a community. It is very easy nowadays with social media to get very fired up very quickly. But I think if we step back and recognize that people have a lot to do that goes on with their lives, that we're not all privy to, that we don't know, and that we take the moment to have what I will say is grace and acceptance and patience of each other. We, in this season especially, should be able to do that and be able to move forward into 2021 with hope and with confidence and a belief that together as a community, we will come out much better. So I wish all of you a very happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you, Councilmember Nigel. That was very nicely said. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I really don't want to go after Councilmember Nigel after such a nice remark, but I do want to take a moment and just really shout out all the city staff behind the scenes who just make this look so easy and it is not. And in particular, our city clerk, Rosemary Licatis, has just done such an amazing job at, during the hardest of times, getting us all of these notices and changes and things that have happened. And I'm just particularly wanted to thank her, her team and all of the others who we probably should shout out that the residents just don't know. And it's as, as Councilmember Nigel said, it's easy to sit home and be upset, but you just have no idea how much folks care. And I'm grateful. And I wish everyone, especially those of us who are having Zoom fatigue, a happy holiday and, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. That's very nicely said. I think, you know, we have, that's, that's one thing that I can say is our city staff care tremendously. And they've all, you know, this whole year have gone above and beyond in so many ways and done so many things that were not in their job descriptions because someone needed to do it. And I, you know, and I thank everyone and I wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday and a better 2021, let's hope. Any other comments from anyone before we close? Okay, well, with that, I wish everyone a happy new year, a happy holiday season, happy and healthy and safe. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're adjourned. See you in 2021.
2021.
Happy holidays. Thank you, everybody.
Care, everybody. Be safe.
Safe.